Lee Summit is your destination for big city vibes and small town charm.
Head to the downtown Lee Summit Farmers Market where local meets fresh. Then grab a cup of coffee. And discover a variety of shops and boutiques just around the corner. Continue the fun in downtown Lee Summit at a retro arcade bar. Discover your new beer at one of our six locally owned breweries. Cool off with some handcrafted cocktails at happy hour. End the night with live music and good company. Lee Summit, Missouri.
Hello, Lee Summit. I'm Laura Inghamann and this is your flash briefing for the week of August 19th. City Council will meet for regular session Tuesday nights, six in council chambers in City Hall. Meetings are open to the public or watch live on the city's YouTube channel. If you can't watch, catch the recorded meeting on demand on the YouTube channel or by subscribing to the Council debrief newsletter, which breaks down three to four key agenda items. Subscribe at cityofls.net. Mayor Baird presented the State of the City address on Friday, August 16th. If you weren't able to attend or watch the live stream, watch the recorded address on the city's YouTube channel or on our website at cityofls.net. Help build a brighter future for Lee Summit. The city is seeking a talented senior staff or staff engineer to join our team. Help manage the design of public infrastructure and collaborate on exciting initiatives that will make an impact on the local level. If you have a passion for civil engineering and public service, this is your chance to shine. Apply today at lspopel.net. Be sure to sign up for the city's free alert system, LS Aware. Receive emergency and non-emergency information by text, email, or phone for events such as severe weather and road closures. You choose how you want to be notified. Learn how to sign up at cityofls.net. And the last Fourth Fridays Art Walk of the season is this Friday, August 23rd, in downtown from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. The art walk will feature over a dozen artist pop-ups and showcases inside and outside of downtown businesses. Enjoy music in the park at 6:30 p.m. at Howard Station Park. For more information, go to downtownls.org. Thanks for listening and have a great week.
I'm Assistant Chief Jim Eden.
And I'm Battalion Chief Ben Hicks.
And today we're at Lee Summit Fire Station 3. Fire Station 3 was part of the 2016 No Tax Increase General Obligation Bond for Public Safety Initiatives. The station was built and occupied in August of 2020. Unfortunately, due to the pandemic, we've not been able to give tours or have an actual ribbon cutting. So we want to invite you in today to give you the opportunity to see what goes on within the Lee Summit Fire Department Station.
Let's go take a tour. This is our admin side of the facility. We use this side mainly for offices. We have a lot of work during the day, whether it's training or doing reports or just generally taking care of the shift that we need to do. At this particular station, Station 3, we do have an assistant chief that works out of here. That person has their own office where they need to manage what's going on throughout the day with the shift and staffing and as well as running calls out of here. The captain has their own office as well. What the captain does is, at this specific station, is in charge of both the fire truck that's here as well as the ambulance. And so with all those personnel responsibilities as well as running calls and reports, that's where they work out of. And generally for the rest of the crew, which is somewhere around five to six individuals, we have rooms where I reports and we have additional training rooms and other rooms where people can work. Walking into our living area, I think it's important to recognize that we work 48 hours a year. So in the evenings, after five o'clock, after work is done, we may have the opportunity to catch a game or something else, as long as we're not running calls. And this gives us the opportunity to do that. When we go into our kitchen, I think this gives you a great reason to know why we go to the grocery store. When you see fire trucks at the grocery store, what we're doing. Also, for two days, working for 48 hours, we buy all our meals at the grocery store and then we come in here and cook, just like you guys do at home. So everybody has their own fridge on each shift as well as their own pantry and then we cook those meals here. Going into the sleeping side of things, we've got a couple of different things that are significant. We have our own laundry room, which again is important when we're here for 48 hours. The option to wash and clean our clothes and bedding is very important for hygiene. And walking into where our beds are, we keep the kind of sleeping quarters over on one side of the building. It gives us both easy access out to where our fire apparatus are as well as kind of keeping it a little bit quieter for those people that have been up all night running calls. We have 11 bedrooms here at this station. And the reason we built it with so many bedrooms is we want to give ourselves as a city the opportunity to expand. So if we need to put another apparatus here or numerous other people working at the station, that's already in place as far as infrastructure goes and we don't need to go back and try to make it bigger or better. And that's really important for us, especially because the old station was so small. Back out on the apparatus floor, we have doors facilitated as many places as possible. So that way when we're sleeping at night and a call comes out, we can make our way out fairly quickly to get out onto the truck if we need to and run a call. On the other side of the station, we kind of have other stuff that we may want to keep separated if we want to. Physical fitness is very important to us as firefighters. So in order to better ourselves and make sure we're as healthy as we can to do this job, we have our own gym facility here that we kind of go throughout the day when we came and get an opportunity to come in and work out. Our goal, when we run calls and we get back to the station after calls, our goal is to get ready to go back as soon as we can to run another call. So we have the opportunity or capability here to fill up our air tanks. You see firefighters, we're the big air tanks on their backs. And they use those in a fire. We can come back and fill those up and make sure that we're ready to go again when we're wanting to go run another call. We have our own workshop here. We work on a lot of our tools and making sure that everything's clean and operational. And this gives us the capability to do that. Again, to make sure that we have everything we need and we're as capable as we can to be running calls throughout the city. Cancer prevention is very important in the fire service right now. Because of that, we have an extractor machine. And what this does is gives us the capability when we come back from a fire, we can put our bunker gear into this machine and get all that really nasty crud off of our gear. Again, kind of getting back to that cancer prevention mode, allowing us to be as clean as we possibly can for the next call. Finally, is our bunker gear room. We each have our own individual locker. This gives us the opportunity to store our gear when we're not here working in between shifts as well as keep a clean extra set on here in case we do run a fire and we need to clean our current gear. Typically, this is where your day starts off at the fire station. You come in and get your gear and put it on wherever you're working that day. And then you end the same way, bringing your stuff back to your locker to go home after working. This is Med 3. This ambulance just currently moved into the station from Station 7. Station 3, since we've had it built, has turned into one of our busiest stations in the city. Therefore, we wanted to provide the best care and the closest units we could. So we moved one of our ambulances up and this became Med 3 for this particular instance. Out of this station, we also have Pumper 3. And that's the fire apparatus that they utilize to run the calls on this west end of the city. The last vehicle that you see is the chief's vehicle. We have two shift chiefs on shift every day and they split the city. And this chief running out of this station typically covers the west and south area of the city, while our chief of Station 2 covers kind of that northeast section of our city and they divided it up evenly.
Thank you for going on a tour with us today. If you have any other questions about the Lee Summit Fire Department, please go to our webpage at lsfire.net or follow us on Facebook at Lee Summit Fire Department.
Thanks for joining us on the tour.
I really love living in our historic downtown. I walk my dog around the shops, take her for, you know, they do pub cups at Poppy's. So you can get ice cream with a little dog biscuit in it, which is her favorite thing in the world. My neighbors, we have block parties together. I just, I really like how welcoming and how vibrant it is. It's an amazing place to live. Lee Summit's a really great community. I love living here and I just wanted to try to find a way to give back. Look out for my neighbors, for the community. I've always tried to be involved. Before serving on city council, I used to volunteer with AFS, which is an organization that hosts foreign exchange students. So my husband and I have hosted kids from around the world and then also volunteered with local families and schools. In my professional life, I'm a paralegal. And then in my personal life, I enjoy reading, sewing. I'm a quilter. So I just finished a log cabin quilt that I'm going to send to my aunt out in DC. I can't claim any of our council accomplishments for myself. This is always a team effort. But I am really excited about the farmers market and event space that we have coming in. It's still in the design phases, but I think it's going to be a really beautiful space and it's going to really continue keeping our downtown thriving. It's been in progress for a long time, but I think that people are going to really love it when it's done. I think one of my top priorities is going to be attainable housing that, for example, I've been trying to find a place for my mom in Lee Summit. And it's really challenging finding something that really works for a retiree who doesn't have a huge budget. Just trying to make it more attainable for people, no matter where they're at in their lives, to be a part of our community. Community is what we make it. Everybody should get involved in whatever way they can. Whether that's just voting or whether it's joining a board or a commission or even running for office. What do they say? The world is run by those who show up. So get involved however you can and make a difference in the community.
We will call to order the Lee Summit Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, August 22nd, 2024. Could I get a roll call, please?
Mark Kitchens. Cherry Frazier.
Present.
Jake Loveless. Dana Arth. Donnie Funk.
Present.
Terry Traptan.
Here.
Tanya Johnna Ford.
Present.
Chip Tuzinski. Randy Benbrook.
Present.
Thank you. I know no changes to the agenda, so I would look for a motion to approve the agenda as published, please.
Chair. Oh, go ahead.
Motion to approve? Motion of a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Can I get a vote on approval of the agenda, please?
Cherry Frazier.
Approve.
Donnie Funk.
Yes.
Terry Traptan.
Yes.
Tanya Johnna Ford.
Yes.
Randy Benbrook.
Yes.
Thank you. We have approval of the agenda. Our next item of business is the approval of our consent agenda. Our consent agenda has two items, that is, application PL 2024-145. Sign application, Delta Woods Middle School wall sign, 4401 Northeast Lakewood Way, Hallisum Miller Architects applicant. And item B, approval of the August 8th, 2024 Planning Commission action letter. Could I get a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
Chair. I move to approve the consent agenda.
Have a motion of a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Could I get approval or get a vote for approval of the agenda, please?
Cherry Frazier.
Approve.
Donnie Funk.
Yes.
Terry Traptan.
Yes.
Tanya Johnna Ford.
Yes.
Randy Benbrook.
Yes.
Thank you. Move on to our next item of business is public comments. This is for anything from the public outside of the business we have tonight on the planning commission. So we will move on to our first public hearing. And we will open up continued application, PL 2024-158, special use permit for major automotive repairs and sales of motor vehicles, 1,000 Southeast Blue Parkway, CRB Industries LLC applicant. Anyone wishing to provide testimony or speak on behalf of this application, please stand and be sworn in at this time. Thank you. The applicant has additional presentation. I know this is continued. The applicant. Hector, you want to take it away?
Good evening. Hector Soto Jr., Senior Planner. So this application was previously heard on August 8th. And at that time, there were some concerns or issues that were brought up by the planning commission as it related to some maintenance items on the property that they felt more comfortable taking final action on the application with some language that would help address the, more specifically, some of the maintenance items on the building itself and the parking lot. So included in your packet and in front of you right now is verbiage that was included as conditions to be added to the ordinance as it relates to this project. The items specifically that were added or that were amended on the ordinance in front of you make specific reference to existing property maintenance code language in the Code of Ordinances and in the UDO that are objection, objectively identifiable and provide the applicant direction as to how to address and abate those items on the building and the parking lot. The applicant's representative, we met with her and them. And the response from the applicant has been that they are amendable to the verbiages put before you to address the maintenance items. So specifically, if we wanted to go down through them, item three, condition number three has three sub items, A, B, and C, with A making reference to the parking lot being brought into compliance with the International Property Code. And it makes a reference to the specific section that addresses the care of the parking lot. We have an item here under B that addresses maintenance of the exterior building, making reference to the two sections in the International Property Code that would apply toward that. In this case, we're dealing with a painted building. This specific language here, which I included in the memo that was included in the packet, does specifically call out the conditions to be met if we are dealing with with painted surfaces, which like here you can see, it does speak to peeling, fleaking, chip paint should be eliminated and surfaces repainted. So it just gives clear direction identifying the problem and how it's supposed to be ameliorated. C is a continuation of the items that were brought forth before in terms of just providing some parking lot screening along the Blue Parkway Street frontage. And then condition number four just speaks a little bit more directly toward where the vehicles that are to be kept onsite, that are there for repair or under, that are in disrepair or under repair, where they are to be kept. And what was done was this exhibit, which we're calling Exhibit A, identifies the areas in which vehicles that are in disrepair or there for repair are to be kept. So as you can see, if you were to look at the building, it's basically an L shape. Everything north of this wall plane here is the area in which those vehicles are limited to storage and/or parking. And so that's the area, it specifically speaks to that situation. In terms of vehicles that are there for sale, for display for sale, that are in good repair, those vehicles can be located anywhere on the lot, in a marked space. But they're not limited to any one specific part of the lot. Whereas we did, with inclusion of this exhibit, are limiting vehicles for repair or disrepair specifically to the area that's hatched and red. The applicant, as I stated, has read the conditions of approval and they are amendable to them as currently written. So I'll yield to any questions you may have.
Thank you, Hector. Do we have any questions or comments from the public before we move on to the commission? Commissioner Benbrook, anything, questions, additional questions on this application for me?
No additional questions, Chair. Thank you.
Tanya Ford.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I have one question. So I was trying to look up some of those property maintenance codes that are listed as the conditions of approvals or recommendations, specifically Section 16202. And the code indicates that surface repair is to be free from hazardous conditions. What would you be considered as hazardous conditions? Based on like the existing photos, like have they been identified, what areas are to be repaired or anything like that?
Sure. So as it relates to the parking lot, basically trip hazards. So like potholes essentially is what we're dealing with on that site. And the areas where you would primarily see those are where you have these joints or seams. So most of it is most of it is along this area here where you have the joint or seam for the asphalt and some of the concrete. There's some here as well. But essentially, we're dealing with things that would objectively be looked at as tripping hazards, which is primarily made up of potholes at this location.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. That's all, Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Traptan.
I don't have any questions, Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Frazier.
I had no questions at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Hector, for refreshment, and this may be something this property is currently unoccupied, correct?
That is correct. Yes.
There's no... Yes, I'm, maybe a question for the applicant of the purpose of a special use permit for an unoccupied building. If there's no function here, yes, I'm not understanding why we're going through this exercise. And we're also, it's a, I guess, twofold question and it may be something the applicant wants the answer is. We're putting, I mean, we're putting some hefty restrictions on this property and some work that's going to have to be done to this property. And this commission will be vocal about staff following up that these things are actually happening. But if there's nothing happening at this facility and maybe it's for sale or for lease or whatever, why are we going through this exercise?
Sure. So I'll let the applicant speak a little more directly to this. One of the things that I'd mentioned at the previous meeting was that there had been, and I don't know what the current state of this potential lease agreement was, but there was a auto sales and major repair dealer that was looking to occupy the building and got to the point of submitting for the business license when it was discovered that this special use permit had lapsed, that the previous one had lapsed. So at least, and again, I don't know the current state of that lease agreement, but with that special use permit having lapsed, they were not in a position to go forward with fulfilling the rest of the business license to occupy the space.
Gotcha. So there is the potential of a tenant that would need a special use permit. But that tenant has no longer applied for a license. Maybe?
I'll let the applicant speak to that, but they were at least on hold until such time as this action went through.
If, Hector, before they do that, if this is approved and, I mean, obviously up there, there's a building owner. If this is approved and nobody goes into this building, taking the special use permit, all of these things have to happen.
Whether it's occupied or not, it's got actionable items that are 45 days from the date of approval. So whether it's occupied or not, the listed items, if approved this way by council, have to be done occupied or not within 45 days of approval of special use permit.
Thank you, Hector. Christine, are they still wanting to... Is there still someone pursuing this property to sell cars and work on cars?
Christine Bushyhead, 315 Southeast Main, Lee Summit, Missouri, for the applicant. I don't know the answer to that question. I don't know if the person who was interested, who came in and sought a business license is still as excited and urged about the space as they were. But I think that's, we'll find out shortly because we need to get the special use permit for what we want to have happen in that space anyway. I think that this is an important step moving forward. And I think I kind of alluded to it in my last comments at the last meeting, that this particular piece of property has been kind of stuck in this perfect storm of COVID as well as what's going on at the M291 North Interchange. And that this property is actually, you may not know, is included in that TIF plan that is, that has been set up to help fund that interchange improvement. That interchange improvement was supposed to be constructed, begin construction in October of 2024, so just in a couple of months. So that kind of helps with certainty a little bit when you're trying to lease a piece of property and trying to explain to someone what access is going to be about. Unfortunately, that has been delayed. So, but at least it's still, it's a project that's on the Missouri Highway STIP. It's a project that the city has received at a date, which allows them to start acquiring necessary right of way for the project. So we know that there's a certainty that that interchange is now going to be constructed. So that's going to help us immensely. So it's really, the timing's really good to be able to line these pieces up for our endeavors to lease. We're feeling pretty confident that we're going to be able to find someone for that space. And we do understand our responsibilities regardless in, within 45 days of final approval to meet the requirements that are on the conditions.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure that if we're going to put these, you know, this could be a hefty, that's a concrete parking lot. I think the city's not going to stand for some patching. And I know what the price of concrete is today to cut that out and repair that and do what needs to be done. I wouldn't want to put that on someone if there's no tenant. But if you feel confident they're going to move forward that, I'm good with it. Anything else from the commission? Any questions while we're in public clearing?
I'm not sure if I can ask this question or not. But so we, if we've asked that the vehicles that are in disrepair fall within the red area that's shaded. I'm wondering, I'm looking at the property to the left and to the right. And I apologize, I don't remember what they are off the top of my head. But is it, can you tell me if it's a car repair place to the left as well? And then I'm looking at, the access seems to be from Blue Parkway and potentially they're going to have a similar issue. And I know they're going to have a similar issue.
The business to, right, the business to the west, they do truck accessories and they do some what's called minor repair.
Okay.
So minor repair does not require a special use permit, they just have to be compliant with certain conditions. So unless they decided to start doing more major bodywork type of collision repair, painting, they would not come in front of the planning commissioner or city council.
Okay, okay. And I, I think in a previous presentation, you had a frontal view. Do you have that in the packet with you right now?
Let's see.
Because I'm thinking there was a dinosaur or something.
Oh, yes, yeah.
There's a dinosaur.
I'm not sure if it'll show up on this photo. I do have that, but it doesn't show up on this photo.
Okay, well, I can access it, I just.
Mm-hmm.
But I do agree that, sort then, the price of concrete is, so aesthetically, all in line.
It's, yeah, you can see.
That's the little dinosaur out there.
Yeah, you can see it right there, yeah.
Okay. Thank you, I don't have any more comment.
Thank you. Nothing else from commission? Now we'll close the public hearing, open up for any comments. Commissioner Benbrook, any comments?
Not, not really any substantial, just I'm glad to see that they're, the owner is willing to be compliant fixing this place up. There is a lot of effort going into the intersection close by, so I think that will be good. And I think fixing it up a little bit is going to bring value to anybody renting the property. So I just appreciate them continuing to maintain their facilities. Thank you.
Commissioner Dana Ford?
Echo what Commissioner Benbrook said. Thank you, Chair.
I'll echo what my previous commissioner said. No further comments, thanks.
Frazier?
Comment, thank you.
Well, I appreciate the applicant coming back and considering all the factors that went into it and good luck with their property. I'd look for Commissioner Dana Ford for a motion on this.
Chair, I move to recommend approval of application PL 2024-158, special use permit for major automotive repair and sales for motor vehicles, 1000 Southeast Blue Parkway, Cerberus Industries LLC, applicant for a period of 10 years.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion, second, could I get a vote on this application?
Sherry Frazier?
Approve.
Donnie Funk?
Yes.
Terry Trafton?
Yes.
Tanya Dana Ford?
Yes.
Randy Benbrook?
Yes.
Application has been recommended for approval. Thank you, guys. We will move to our next item of business, and we will open up continued application, PL 2024-129, preliminary development plan, Duncan Lee Summit, 1399 Northeast Douglas Street, Blue Mount Group LLC, applicant. Anyone wishing to provide testimony or speak on behalf of this application, please stand and be sworn in at this time. The applicant has a presentation for us, please come forward and state your name and address for the record, please.
Patrick Joyce, 436 Northeast Brockton Drive in Lee Summit, Missouri. Okay. Everybody see that okay? So yes, so we are proposing a Dunkin' Donuts. I think everybody knows what those are, I know I do. So this is the location where we are proposing it. For all you dog lovers out there, it's just right down the street from the best dog park in Lee Summit, off of Victoria and Northeast Douglas. If you guys recall, this is a, the old site of the, there used to be a Burger King right there on that corner, that now has changed to a dental office. We're looking at splitting up that parking lot and putting our drive-through only Dunkin' Donuts on the south side of that existing lot. You can see the basic configuration here. We've got our two drive-throughs, menu boards located right about there, and then the pickup window here. We've also reoriented the parking lot a little bit to provide, you know, still provide parking for these guys, but then reorienting it as such. This is a lighting plan that we prepared. Let me see, there's a few additional lights that we're adding, not only for our drive-through, but also in that, in that parking lot there. Landscape plan, keeping a lot of the existing landscaping up front, but then augmenting it with some additional shrubbery and trees throughout the little green space that we've, we've added in just south of, of our drive-through. This is the building elevation that you see here. We did bring some sample boards, if you guys would like to look at those a little bit closer. This is another elevation view of what, what the building's going to look like. So let's just stare at that for there a little bit. I also brought our architect, Sarah Christman, with us, who can help answer any questions about this. Here's kind of the exterior finish, which is a combination of painted metal and fiber cement lap siding, and then some masonry stone veneer. If you, and like I said, we brought, we brought samples to include with those. So just, I think that's the last slide, yeah, it is. So in closing, we did have a neighborhood meeting as required by the preliminary development plan. We did have some neighbors come out, it was all very positive. The only questions were when were we opening type thing, so, so yeah, so we're happy to stand for any questions. Again, Sarah Christman's also in the audience from the architect's office, and that's all I got.
Thank you. Staff, do you have a presentation for us?
So, good evening, members of the planning commission, my name is Ian Treffren, planner. Before I begin, I'd like to enter into the record Exhibit A, list of Exhibits 1 through 14.
Exhibits 1 through 14 noted and entered into the record.
All right, thank you. So this evening, I'm presenting application PL 2024-129, a preliminary development plan for Duncan Lee Summit. The applicant is requesting approval of a PDP to allow for the construction of a drive-through coffee shop facility on the southern end of the property located at 1399 Northeast Douglas. As previously mentioned, this is the site of an orthodontist facility or office on the north end of the site. That building is not being modified with this application, it's remaining as it is. That being said, there are modifications to the parking lot and drive aisles, as seen in the darkened, you know, lines on this map here. And the drive-through facility is on the southern end down here. And here's a map of the existing conditions, this is an ALTA survey from right now, and this is not including the proposed modifications, so you can kind of see what the site looks In terms of adjacent zoning and land uses, to the west of the property is primarily dominated by Office Warehouse Industries across Northeast Douglas. To north and south are different strip commercial sites, Zone CP2. And then to the east is a detached single-family neighborhood, all zoned R1, and, sorry, across Douglas to the west is PI, the Planned Industrial District. The project itself meets all of the density and dimensional standards set forth by the UDO for the building itself, so it meets the floor area ratio requirements, building height limitations, building size requirements, land coverage requirements. And since it's a drive-through only facility, the parking is only required to be nine spaces, however, the applicant's proposing 16 in total, so they exceed our parking requirements that are set forth by the UDO. And that's just for the southern portion of the site. There's more parking included, which accommodates the existing dental office to the north, so. In terms of the application itself, there was a neighborhood information meeting held on June 18th. One applicant, or one resident attended this meeting and kind of expressed some concerns over stormwater drainage and the internal drive, however, they did not express objection to the project itself. And staff has received no additional comments from the public since that meeting. The only modification, well, not modification, a sign package being requested is for four attached wall signs, which I'll get into after the elevations here. So the elevations look like this, materials include cement, lap siding, stone veneer, and architectural metal trim material, and that orange going above the drive aisle, or the, sorry, order window, and along like the top of the building, it's that orange and gray at the very top. So it's not a conditional material since it doesn't comprise a majority, you know, a substantial portion of the facades, and the rest of the materials are approved materials for the CP2 district. So that's the north and south, and then the east and west. West the property is Northeast Douglas, so if you're driving down Douglas, you'd be seeing the, the bottom facade of these two, just for reference. For the sign package, the applicant's requesting four total wall signs, that is in excess of one, so the limit is three total wall signs for the CP2 district. The signs themselves all meet the cumulative signed area requirement, so each facade ranges between about one and a half to eight and a half percent coverage, depending on which one you're looking at. So even though the total number of signs exceeds the limit, the signed area does not, so staff is supportive of this request. In terms of an analysis of the project itself, the future land use map indicates this property for a commercial development, and the Ignite Comprehensive Plan has suggestions and goals to allow for infill development. So since this is a, a better use for this underutilized portion of the parking lot, it does meet the goals of the Comprehensive Plan, and it kind of fits nicely into what the city was intending for this site. So with that, staff finds that this project meets the goals of the Comprehensive Plan with the conditions of approval listed below, and I'll now stand for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ian. Do we have any questions or comments from the public? And I will open up to the commission for questions. Frazier, do you want to start us off?
Is it a 24-hour facility?
My name is Sarah Christman, I am representative of the architect, James D. Smith, his address is 522 Bay Lane, Centerville, Massachusetts. I unfortunately do not know, I believe it is meant to be a 24-hour service. The Dunkin' Donuts representative, we expected to be here tonight, unfortunately was not able to make it. They would be the one to answer that question, I believe that is the intent.
So before we go on down the line here with commissions for questions, are either one of you capable of answering the questions of like the volume of business they intend to do and the hour, I mean, obviously, we have no idea if this is going to be open for an hour, four hours, five hours, or 24 hours? And I'm a pretty big stickler on if the owner is coming and asking for development in our city, that the owner come and ask for development in our city. Do you know the volume of business that they intend to come out of this store, because I believe down the street, that Dunkin' is done and not happening, Ian? So do you know that volume of business?
Unfortunately, if the, any answer I gave you would be an estimate, not something that the client has, or the applicant has told me or provided as an answer for you.
I think that question really late, that will probably come up by the design of this drive-through and the stacking of cars and that kind of, we'd kind of like to understand what they think the volume of business is going to be in their peak times, what we would think would be peak times for the orthodontist, and owner's not here to answer those questions. I don't know if we continue to move forward with this application, but I'll leave that up to the commission.
I completely understand that. Now, from a general perspective regarding Dunkin' Donuts operations, I can speak to that. I can't speak to what the client's expectations are for this particular location, but I can tell you what Dunkin' Corporate and, in that sense, this applicant is expecting for the number of cars going through the drive-through in peak hours, how many cars are expected to line up and be in the queue at peak hour, and so on. Roughly 70 to 80%, probably closer to 80 or 85% of a Dunkin's business is through its drive-through. That would be why this store is meant as a drive-through or walk-up only store, especially after COVID. People are not going into these stores to sit down and have their coffee and donuts there in their car, going to work, going to school, coming after school, or they are walking up to the window and taking it wherever, wherever they, they plan to go. With Dunkin's, ideally, they would like to be able to accommodate 90 cars per hour in a peak hour in the drive-through. Now, the idea is that a single car would go from the order point, the menu board, to the window and leave in under a minute. It has to be less, it has to be 45 seconds to, to get 90 cars in, in an hour. That is relatively accurate, it's by all means achievable. In, for this particular location, I don't believe that the applicant would expect any less. Granted, that peak hour is going to be typically in the mornings, let's say anywhere from ballpark as early as 5:30 in the morning to as late as 9:30. You're not going to see 90 cars an hour through that drive-through for that entire time. It's certainly ebb and flow. And after that, there, there can be some steady times, maybe 30 cars through the drive-through in an hour, and then especially in around midday, especially earlier mid-afternoons, it's very slow.
Chair, if I may add a little color to that, since the site was previously developed with a drive-through and it's not expected to exceed 100 peak hour trips, or 100 trips per peak hour, a new traffic study was not required, but a traffic memo was provided during the review, and no traffic improvements were required per that, that review. Then in addition, the peak hours generated by the proposed business aren't really going to change, regardless if it's a 24-hour operation or a 12-hour operation, the peak hours will remain about the same, or the peak trips.
I think the drive-through was a completely different design.
It was a different design, but it functions, the use would be the same.
Traffic flow would be a little bit different. Site plan, it kind of takes up those two openings, and 90 cars per hour is a lot, and I guarantee you that that dentist office, I don't really guarantee, I know that dentist office opens at 7:30, quarter to 8:00 in the morning, that's a lot of traffic going in there.
One thing I would like-
I'll move down to the other commissioners. Commissioner Trafton, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I do. My question's related to the back drive, so you guys are improving that drive as well?
So when you're speaking of the back drive, are you referring to the one with the orthodontist office, or?
The, what they, I think they've titled it Asphalt Drive on the plane. It's, and if you go.
Where was it located? Sorry.
It's where the cars are going to be entering off of-
So right here?
Street, this, like, no, like behind that, see, there's 30-foot driveway?
Yes.
That's a shared driveway to get to the dentist office, the Dunkin', and then also the strip center, like that drive. Are they improving that drive as well?
Sorry, I, I'm probably not understanding exactly.
It's called private drive on there.
Oh, over here on the right? No, this is already existing, this is remaining as is, the only modifications being done to it are the entrance going into the- The only modifications being done to it are the entrance going into the, where the orthodontist's office and the Dunkin' is, but the actual drive itself is not, is not changing with this. The only modification that's happening is the location of a trash enclosure up here at the north end, but other than that, this is remaining effectively.
Has that drive, that private drive been improved in the last, when that dental office went in?
I can't speak to whether or not it's undergone specific improvements. When you say that, do you mean like resurfacing or things?
Yeah, it had a lot of potholes in it. It was really hard to drive through. You know, since Panera moved across the street, I think the traffic flow on that drive has gone down, but when, I mean, at one point, it was pretty rough driving through there. So, I don't know who owns that private drive. Is it the strip mall? And it's like an easement? Because everybody's using it off of Victoria?
There's a, a general access easement on this property. So, this was originally part of a larger subdivision plat that kind of went down to that strip mall to the south. And there was a general shared access easement that was put on the plat, which has been carried over into the current plat that's on it. So, the repairs and maintenance of it should be shared by the owners of the property, and I believe that's being carried over into the current plat, which was kind of depicted here, but this lot was split into as part of this project, which was done administratively, which is why it's not part of this. But that language was carried over, so maintenance should be shared by the owners of the property.
Oh, and you say owners of the property, like Dunkin's buying this lot, the dental office owns the lot, and then the strip mall, I'm assuming, is owned by a singular company person. So, the, the maintenance and upkeep of that private drive would be done by all three of those, is that in your example?
So, the specific language points to a declaration of CCR, which regulates that, which I can pull up. It just might take me a little bit of time. I'll have to go into the Jackson County files and get it, but the actual cross-access easement was dedicated back in 98, and from my recollection, it does assign responsibility to the owners. But again, I can pull that up if you would like. It might just take me a second.
I guess, well, I think you basically have answered that it's a shared-
Yeah, I mean, it's shared access.
Shared access, shared maintenance, upkeep of the private drive. I just don't know if the private drive has been updated and when it was last updated, because I haven't, I don't drive in that section as much anymore, because I'm not going to the Panera that's not there. I go to across the street. But I guess my concern is if that wasn't up, upgraded, then like what's the plan for upgrading? I don't know that we can answer that question tonight related to this specific application, but I guess if I was the applicant, and I know I'm going to be running 90, you know, in a peak moment, 90 cars through my drive-through, I'd want that drive to be able to handle the traffic that I'm going to be putting on it as part of, you know, making sure people aren't driving through potholes, which at one point, there were like so many potholes, there was really no way to, unless you were going to zigzag through that private drive and probably crash into somebody that's trying to get out, because honestly, there's so many cars going through there. It's a little, so I guess my concern is traffic flow on the private drive, and, you know, when it was, is it planned to be upgraded, updated? When was it? And so, I don't know how we get that answer.
So, Commissioner, I can add, you know, we can definitely take a look at that area, address it through our standard property maintenance, and if we do identify issues, we can address those and have the, the common area brought up to standard. Common areas are typically maintained through a similar thing, similar processes that you would do that common area of your HOA. So, there's probably a, a commercial owners association out there that will maintain the common areas, and that's as dictated by those CCRs that Ian referenced.
Yeah, I guess we'll just let you guys manage it through. I just want to noted that, you know, I think it should be looked into, and if I was building that property, I would want to make sure it was upgraded, or like current state, able to handle that level of traffic. So, okay, thank you.
We'll absolutely look into that.
Thank you, sir.
And address anything we had to identify.
Appreciate it. All right, that was my only question.
Thank you, Commissioner Trafton. Commissioner Jenna Ford.
Thank you, Chair. I have a couple of questions. The first one is regarding the parking lot. I'm having a hard time deciphering the delta of what was existing in terms of parking spaces versus new, and then in addition, the requirement is nine, specific to Dunkin', correct?
That's correct, yes.
So, is there an imaginary line that defines the nine that are set aside for Dunkin'? I'm just having a hard time allocating the spots, because it seems like we're not really doing any, like, we're not, let me, I'll let you answer the question, and then I'll continue.
So, there is no, you know, hypothetical line that we draw in the sand where we say these lots are specifically set aside for Dunkin' or not. Since Dunkin' is not going to be a walk-up facility, it does not have pedestrian access, the only spaces that are being taken up by that facility are those for the staff itself. So, with that, there is some, some shared parking spaces here, and that being said, the amount of parking available does meet both, you know. We, we have enough parking to meet the demands for both, except for in our UDO. I don't know, Shannon, did you?
Also, given the, the general cross-access easement that would assign parking not to a specific user, but to that development as a whole, so they are able to utilize a cross-access and shared parking model throughout the, the parking lot as a whole, not just for the orthodontist or Dunkin', but the other businesses there as well.
Sure. I guess what I was trying to get at is trying to understand the story that was coming from the existing to this new layout. For instance, right in front of the existing dental office, I see the grade-out 388 and then two standard spots, and then we just extended that line, and where the dumpster, there was originally a row of parking lots. So, I'm just trying to like understand the story of how this site development happened, knowing that for this proposed half lot build-out, there's only nine acquired. So, on paper, it means that there's five additional, but what I also want to understand is the overall picture.
Came from, yeah, yeah.
Correct.
So, also, given the use that the original site was developed as a drive-through restaurant facility that would require 14 stalls per thousand, and the current use is a medical office type use, which would only require five stalls per thousand, the requirement for the existing use of the orthodontist is significantly lower than the original design of the building. So, that's why there may be some confusion with regards to what was originally there versus what's there now.
So, if I understand that explanation, we have overall reduced the, like, the amount of spots with this new development?
Correct, but the uses that are there don't require the, the amount that was previously required.
Sure, okay. That, that makes sense. I just wanted, I, I was just trying to figure out, I'm, I don't like extra parking spots for no reason, so that's kind of where I was asking this question.
I kind of worded that very poorly. Thank you, Shannon.
Thank you. All right, so, it has been confirmed. Do you mind flipping back to the proposed site? Yes. So, the exist, or the proposed building will not have a public lobby. It is accessible via drive only. Okay. So, can you help describe what that supplementary lane to the south of the cars queued up are? Is that like a waiting line? Is that?
So, there's, are you talking about the double-stack lanes here or the one to the north?
Yep, that one right there.
This one? This is a slip lane, so it's just giving an additional, you know, way to move through the site, or if you're-
Oh, so I changed my mind lane?
More or less, yeah.
Okay.
Sometimes there's a refer to as bailout lanes.
That's shorter. Thank you. All right, so, now the trash enclosure. Is the existing trash enclosure to the dental office being relocated, and that one singular trash enclosure is shared by both buildings?
That is my understanding. The existing trash enclosure is moving to that new location, and yes, there's only one trash enclosure for the site.
Considering that's the entry into, sorry, this might be for the applicant or the architect. I want to have a better idea for the decision to locate it right at the entry. I was looking at your, your vegetation and tree landscape plan. There are no trees hiding it, so as you drive by, that's the first thing you would see, and there's no elevations of the trash enclosure.
I would love to refer to Civil to answer this question, if, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Sure. The, the decision to put the trash enclosure there was really based on the ability to access it. If you've been out to the site, you know that, that this intersection up here, right up here is a, kind of a, one of those funky three-quarter access ways in. So, we didn't feel like it was going to be that intrusive to have, you know, the early morning trash truck come in, be able to swoop in, come in, pick it up, and back out, and then move on down to pick up, you know, additional trash. That way, they're not trying to, you know, circulate through our, through our site and such. This, this thing here, you know, it is, it is screened, you know, it does have masonry screening on, on, on three sides and then a door in the front, so that's, that's what, that's what it is for.
Do you have any pressing images for what the design is going to be for this, considering, like I said, it is at, right at the entry?
I don't have, I don't have any elevations that I brought with me of that, but it is, it is basically the, this, it's going to look at similar masonry style, like split-face CMU to the, to the medical office right there.
The architecture matches the building?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. And I don't know if this would be a question for you or the architect either. So, there's a photometric plan, but considering that there's residences on the east side, is there a hard cutoff so that there's no light spillage into those backyards?
Yes, that was, I don't know if I have a photometric plan that actually has the foot candles on the ground, but that is, that's a common practice to do house-side shields and cutoffs so that there's no light bleed over, especially when you're next to a single-family residential, which we are.
Okay. And that is all the questions I have, Chair. Thank you. Thank you for that.
Thank you. Commissioner Brimble.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I have a few. While we're on it, let's stay on the trash enclosure. I have an issue with it. So, if I'm a trash truck and I pull up to get this trash container, and I do it in the morning, which has already been stated, which we know is when a lot of people do this, or pick up trash, and I've got 90 cars trying to get through that queue at the same time, not relatively, but within that hour, you got cars coming in off of Victoria, making a, a right-hand turn practically into the back of a trash truck. If that trash truck needs to back out, that means that car has to back out into the street. That's not good. This needs to be a 90-degree lane. You need to push that trash enclosure further into the site so that that truck can get completely out of that driveline. That way, we don't have this conflict of traffic. Second thing, I'm going to talk about the site layout. Since we have extra parking, the first three along the dental office coming in off the access lane need to go away. They're right on the other side of the stack, and we really don't want that kind of conflict. We need to get rid of those three, make that just grass. Since we're overparked, we can eliminate three. We could be great. Again, a conflict. If I'm trying to back out, a car comes around that corner trying to get their early morning coffee and get to work, we're going to have an accident. So, we need to get rid of those three. We need it to be safe. Roof access ladder in the, in the rendering, in the elevations, does not show a guard. I'm going to assume that's going to be locked up so nobody can get on the roof anytime they want. Okay, I'm, I'm seeing the architect shake her head, yes, so. Third thing, are we serving hot food, breakfast sandwiches outside of coffee? Okay, let's go back to the site plan, please. As we know, these places get busy, 90 cars an hour, less than one minute per. They get behind on frying tots, whatever it is. Where do they go if they have to wait for food? Are we backing the stack up? Some restaurants have a spot where they could pull out, and an employee will run out and give them food.
That's correct. There, I will preface that by saying there are a couple ways that we are helping those 90 cars. Again, hypothetical, not hypothetical, but average, hopeful number.
Well, can we, let's, let's not stay with the hypothetical. Let's, let's say somebody calls in sick and they're short.
Sure, no.
Can't get things made in time. Where do those people go? Where do the cars go waiting for food?
Those cars, if you are looking at this plan, I don't have this one. Thank you. Your menu boards are here. You're approaching the building. The drive-through lane, the drive-through window is right at the end of the building. If they get to this point, this is where they both pay and pick up their orders. If their order is not ready, but orders behind them are, they will be asked to pull into one of these two parking spaces here. It's, as I said, due to that 70 to 80% of business coming through that drive-through window. Again, probably higher because there is no dining room. It's highly unlikely that those two parking spaces will be occupied. If they are, though, the idea is that they'll move one up, next one up. They will be asked to park as close to the, the building as possible. There will be a door on the front of the building. I believe we can see them in the elevations where the employees can-
On the front, it's on the side.
I'm sorry?
It's on, it's on the south side. It's not in the front. There's no door on the front of the building.
Okay, okay. My apologies. They will exit the building, walk around, and take the order to the car.
Okay. Have we, a, a, as a company, Dunkin' Donuts, have they dealt with Uber Eats? Are they dealing with Uber Eats? They have contracts. Where do their drivers come to pick up?
They're expected to walk to the, or get out of their cars, go up to the walk-up window, pick up their orders there, go back to their cars, and leave the site.
Okay, we have an issue. We have no walk-up window. We only have a drive-up window unless we're going to cross pedestrian traffic with vehicular traffic, which I don't think we're going to do. So, it's been stated two different ways in this meeting. It's been stated that there's a walk-up window, and it's been stated that there's no walk-up window. So, which are we doing?
My apologies for the confusion. They will be coming through the drive-through lane.
Okay, so, absolutely no pedestrian traffic. So, if I'm-
Correct.
-next door at the dental office, and I'm working, I don't know, let's say I'm a dental technician, and I want to run across the street to get a cup of coffee, I have to get in my car and drive over there?
Correct.
Not sure I like that. I think that's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Back to, if we could go back to the site plan, Ian, showing the drive-through, I'm going to use the teenage term, that the math ain't mathin' of 90 cars an hour, from the time that person gets their order, we're talking split seconds. I mean, there's no, there's zero room for error before we're stacked up out the back of this thing, if you do the math.
I will say, the stacking requirements for this site far exceed what the ordinance requires. There was actually one of the first conversations that we had when this project came through was about the stacking requirements. I believe they only needed, I want to say, three from the pickup window to the order board, and then four from the order board to the drive access, and as you can see, they, they pretty much doubled that in terms of the, the ladder portion. You know, with respect to processing times, that's an operational question that can kind of defer back to the applicant for, but in terms of what, you know, staff requires and what the ordinance requires, they do exceed the UDO requirement for, for queuing, which-
How do, how do we get that at a Dunkin' Donuts that says they're going to do 90 cars in an hour? I mean, you're going to have to have cars backed up. If they're turning them every 45 seconds, you still need almost 12 more cars to make that time. I just don't understand. I get it, it's our UDO. I'm definitely not in agreement on this. I hope it works. I mean, we want them there. We're not against it. I'm just looking like, we're going to put this dental office in a mess if this backs up in the morning, and the trash does not come in the morning. It comes in, I believe, at 11:00 in the afternoon because of the neighborhood. It's not running dumping trash cans at 6:00 in the morning. It up years ago. May have changed, sorry.
Mr. Chair, I would add that the traffic engineer is on her way here, so if we wanted to take a momentary pause and allow her to, the time to arrive-
we could get some of those traffic questions answered for you.
I'll leave it up to the commission. I'm not really up to pausing on this evening.
It's, it's up to you.
I think, I mean, there's not even ownership here from this to verify or confirm. I mean, if the architect wants to confirm 90 cars an hour, I'm not in agreement that this design is going to work. I mean, I'm afraid we're gonna have a stacking nightmare. Um, but I'll leave it up to the commission. Um, we can, if there's no more questions while we're in the public hearing, we can close it and have discussion, um, on what we want to do. Again, we will close. Oh, go ahead, sorry. Go ahead.
So I want to make sure I understand, because I was a little bit confused here. So there is no walk-up window. And, okay, because, that's fine. I was gonna go with, there's no dining room, but sometimes there is a dining area slab outside, but there's no walk-up window, so there's no way to take your coffee or whatnot and
It's not like, uh,
eat outside.
Like a Dutch Bros, you know, where there's that walk-up window. It's not like that. It's more like a Scooters in a way, where there's only drive-through available, yes.
All right.
Just to provide an example.
Okay.
Can I ask a follow-up to that, Chair? Do we have something similar to this in Lee Summit? Where there is no walk-up window, where it's just a drive-through, a coffee shop?
Scooters would probably be the most likely. Or like, uh, actually, that'd probably be the best.
Do we know about how many cars come through them?
I can't.
Between six and eight?
I can't speak to that off the top of my head, no. I can look that up for you, though. Surely follow up.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. I will close the public hearing and open up for discussion. Commissioner Frazier, anything you want to discuss?
I'm sorry, I just would prefer that, um, the applicant or the owner would be here.
Understood. Commissioner Trachten?
Yeah, I kind of agree with Commissioner Frazier. Um, the other thing, I, I mean, I know this is adjacent to this application, but I'm still struggling with the private drive and all that. But, um, yeah, so I'm at a crossroads. Like, should we continue this application? So the applicant can be present to answer some of these questions? You know, there's concerns around walk-up, traffic, Uber. You know, we all know all those things. So, I mean, I guess those are just my comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Jennifer Ford?
Thank you, Chair. So I have five, or one, two, three, four points that I think I would like to see if we were to do a continued application. Um, given the location to residents and a lot of walkable businesses, I think a walk-up window would be needed. Um, to, I mean, why would you want to drive your car from one lot to another and wait? Um, and then the trash visibility in addition to the location. Um, and I would like to see parking metrics, just the difference, black and white. Um, and then lighting, like a photometric plan. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Bimbra?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Um, I, I think the site plan needs a little bit more refining. Um, I, I think it's not, not great the way it is. I think it needs a little bit more clarity as far as flow. I would like to see a little bit more room for stack. Um, we've all seen how businesses, when they open up in Lee Summit, they're overwhelmed. And, and there's just nowhere for this to go except out onto the street. Um, and I'm hoping Dunkin' does great here, you know, but we might need to think about maybe a third stack lane that can feed into this. Um, don't know how that works with the property lines, uh, but I do think this needs a little bit more work. Thank you.
Thank you. I agree with my fellow commissioners. I think back in COVID and Zoom and applicant to be present to make sure we get all the proper questions answered. Leads to the applicant, the architects that are here and presenting. We want you here, we want to do business. I was excited about the Dunkin' down the road. I see what it's like at Chick-fil-A. I see what it's like at Starbucks down the way. I see what happens. That Starbucks goes out across the way, goes out of the parking lot, out, down. It makes a giant mess down there. I think to benefit all parties involved, I think having the drive-through, uh, Dunkin' Donuts is great. I think a walk-up window would be great. Um, I, I, I'm deeply concerned about the stacking. I just don't think if 90 cars an hour, I'm like, not a great math politician, but, I mean, they're flinging donuts and coffees and sandwiches really quick because you're gonna have to have another 16 cars backed up in there somewhere to make that 90 cars an hour. I, I would be for continuing the application and allow the applicant to be here, to give us some good data on how fast things move and what they can do. We just seen Chick-fil-A add a whole nother drive-through lane. Um, I think, I'm going to be a little stickler here and say that if someone is here to testify or put in an application, they need to be here in person on time. Uh, that's kind of my stickler. But with that, I will leave it to staff if they're good with continuing this. Are we on a timeline? Does the applicant not want to continue this and...
Uh, so my recommendation is that we take a five-minute pause so we can confer with the applicant to see if there's a date certain they would like it to continue with, or what their, um, her opinion is on, on moving forward.
True. I will take a five-minute recess and we'll re-adjourn.
Welcome to the Lee Summit Sign Department. We are gonna walk you through our process from start to finish. We make signs as needed here. It's not like we just go out into the field and place a speed limit sign here, no parking here. Our traffic engineers, they go through and they'll do field studies. They'll send us down an engineering work order for us to go out, place new signs or remove signs as needed. Coming from the material, our blanks come in, and they're just aluminum blanks. We can put our white, our red, our, you know, our fluorescent yellow, green, whatever. And basically what it looks like is just that there. Throw it up into the, the roller. And once we got it covered, take it to our work table here, and Tim will cut the corners, cut all the access off to where it's, uh, lined up right. As far as the plotter and the software that we use, there's a street name sign there, and he's gonna go ahead and print that out on the plotter so you can see the plotter and how it operates and runs. There are standards for the height, even just on letters on the sign blank. Basically, what we have on the computer there is, it's pretty much set up to those. And it goes through, it's got a very small but sharp needle that goes through and cuts everything out, letter by letter. Once that's done, uh, cutting, our next stage would be bringing it over here. Currently picking out the signed letters right now. We call it weeding, or picking, or however you want to call it. Next, putting it on the transfer tape. Then after it's taped, we bring it over to the roller. That's where we apply it to the actual sign blank. And we'll roll it through one time just to get the air bubbles out. And the last stage is basically just, uh, taking the transfer tape off the front of it. And there's a finished product of the street name sign. We'll take you out to the field and show you our process that we go through. We're gonna go out and follow our sign guys, get something installed for you. This is where we check our underground utilities. Tim, you got AT&amp;T?
AT&amp;T's back here.
Uh, Evergy, Google. So we should be good to go. We normally put all of our stuff together out in the field. Then once the base is installed, we'll go ahead and put the post in there. We've come up to perfect. And that's how we do it. Simple, quick.
Traditionally, we think as police officers, those responding to law enforcement needs within the community. But honestly, we are there to serve our citizens, and our citizens do go into crisis. They do have mental health crises, and we're being called to those scenes on a regular basis. In order to help serve those citizens better, we did initiate the Crisis Intervention Team Program. These are officers that are specially trained to de-escalate crisis situations. Recently, we've brought co-responders onto the scene, licensed, qualified, mental health professionals housed within our police department. And they respond with those officers directly to those scenes where a crisis is occurring so they can interact with that citizen and get them the help they need right there on that scene.
The co-responders are either a bachelor or master level in a behavioral health-related field. They wear plainclothes, bands or anything like that.
I have a police radio that I listen to all day. Listen for, you know, those key words, mental health, behavioral health, crisis.
There's a lot of officers that just call for me. I have my own radio number.
I also have the ability to self-dispatch to them. When, say, 982 is in route. Officers in route, 914.
So typically, I arrive after they've made it safe. I'll make contact and get kind of the rundown, and then I just kind of jump right in.
Like, hey, you know, my name's Allison, I'm a mental health professional. I'm here to help you. I'm not here to take you to jail or arrest you.
Sometimes, all a person needs is a voice, someone neutral, someone outside that, you know, can listen. I do a lot of safety planning, including family, their support network. Who's close to you? Is, can some, if they're home alone, who can come over and hang out with you today? Can we lock away your sharps? Can we put up your meds? Do you need meds? Can we get you over to the urgent care to get you assessed for your medications? Some of them also are like, oh, I'm so glad you came, this made me feel so much better.
Our main goal as co-responders is to, one, get people connected to the services that they need, and also divert from emergency rooms and jails.
And they almost get a different view of the police responding. That lets me know you care and the officers care.
Do you have a police? Can we help you?
My husband has...
In 2020, we had 722 mental health-related calls for service. 2022, by that time, 1,479. These mental health-related calls for service are increasing. How we're responding to that is increasing the number of Crisis Intervention Team officers we have available, as well as the number of co-responders we have available to respond on these calls.
So what I think is important for the community to know about the co-responder program is that we're here, we exist. All you have to do when you call 911 is ask for us. You know, say, hey, I want a co-responder to respond to this, this crisis, and we'll go. I was really struggling about eight years ago on my personal journey with mental health, and I met some amazing social workers and amazing programs that have helped me get to where I am today. I really couldn't see myself doing anything else. We want to help, and that's, that's what we love to do.
So at a client, we got a call, she had some suicidal ideations, and she really felt that she had nobody. And, you know, and getting to know her story, and getting to know who comes around and sees you. Well, then we found a support person, and they responded immediately, and we made a plan. I called back and checked on her in an hour, and then I checked on her in two hours. We were able to get her into the additional services to where she talks to someone every week or more. I just took a person that really just thought they had nobody, and nobody would show up for them, and showed them, you do. And you'll be amazed, who is in your corner if you just simply say, I need a little help.
When the person called on the phone, she said that, uh, that there was a dinosaur walking down her road. Of course, we had to go out and check that out. We get out there, and it was a big African tortoise, probably 60 pounds, walking down the road. When they walked, they really stand up tall, so I could see why she thought it was a dinosaur. I'm Rodney Wagner, I'm the manager of Lee Summit Animal Control. So as you can see, we get all sorts of animals here. You have some guinea pigs off to the side. All the windows up here are animals that are adoptable right now. Every one of these dogs is ready to go and ready for adoption. And the same thing with our cats over here. A lot of cool cats in here now, so. So this is our three-acre lot we have out back. And this is where we do all the walk-in dogs, exercise. We also have a side yard off to the side over there, so we can let them run loose. They can run together, and we have what's called play groups. Kind of like having a bunch of kids. Here's our, our vet room. We have a vet that comes out twice a week. This is our sally port where we bring the animals into. This is one of our animal control trucks. And we can hold up to six animals. We have a lift on the other side to put big animals in. We actually have temperature gauges in here and in the truck to tell us how hot it is. Once it gets to a certain temperature, we bring all the animals back here immediately. So this actually has traps in it, but we do a lot of wildlife trapping. I mean, a lot, so. Bats, pot-bellied pigs, horses, cows, emus, a lot of reptiles. We had, uh, a citizen one time, they had over, uh, 200 reptiles in his basement. Caymans and alligators in here that are four or five feet long. You can't keep those. And people do, and they're surprised when they can't keep them. I'm like, really? You're surprised you can't have an alligator in here? Our main goal here is public safety and also the safety of the animals. And we have very dedicated people back there, and they definitely stay here for the love of the animals, which also includes getting them adopted out. We'll have about, uh, 4,000 impounded animals a year, probably about close to 2,000 are dogs and cats. The cats and dogs, when they get impounded here, they go on a five-day hold. And then after the five days, if the owner doesn't show up, then we can put them up for adoption. Adopt a animal here is actually really simple. You just come in, look for whatever animal you're looking for, find the right pick. You have, you go to the adoption room up there and see if you get along with them. You spend as much time as you want to in there.
We will re-adjourn, um, do we have, Amy, what would be the next date certain? I think the consensus of the commission is we continue this and see the site plan redrawn, um, with, with some of the solutions that we had. At the next meeting, we could make sure that our traffic engineer is here when we open up the public hearing, that we're able to get the questions answered on the stacking of the 90 cars an hour, and maybe just give them a prelude of how that calculation of how many seconds each car is gonna have to pass through that window.
Um, good evening, Amy Nassif, Deputy Director of Development. Our next meeting would be September 12th, actually, it'd be a little bit. Um, and the city council meeting, first reading would be October 8th. Am I correct, Shannon? Yep, September 12th. And then October 8th for city council.
Site plan?
Uh, Mr. Chair, if you would, or if I could, um, disregard.
We can reopen the public hearing if we need to. For, if they have something they want on the record, we can reopen it. We will reopen the public hearing. Go ahead.
I spoke with the owner during our recess, and I want to offer his apologies for his absence today. Uh, apparently, he is taking his son to the hospital, who is sick. So he is, um, very regretful that he was unable to be here before you today. Um, I'm hoping his, his son is okay. Um, in addition to that, I did ask him a couple of questions to try and answer some of the ones that, uh, you had presented to us. He is amenable to adding a walk-up window. Um, he understands your question about, say, anyone coming from the dentist office looking for coffee. It would be for pickup only, so you'd order on the app, or, say, Uber Eats could use that as well, um, besides going through the drive-through. He also said that, uh, his operations expects 60 cars per hour, 50 to 60, not 90. So not quite the volume that, um, could be done, um, by a store like this. And because of that, he's thinking... And because of that, he's thinking that there will be likely only three cars pre-order point in either lane. So there would be six cars waiting to put in their order. And the reason why he put in both of those order points is to assist in that, keeping that stack lower. He has had several conversations, in-depth conversations, with the orthodontist or dentist's office. And they're very much on board. They are supportive of the design.
Thank you. Anything else from the commission where we have a public hearing? Anything you want to? Just no?
Were you able to confirm the hours, operating hours?
I was, yes. It's not 24-hour. It's expected to be 5:00 AM to 9:00 or 10:00 PM. And again, he did discuss that with the dentist. The dentist is aware they will be open and probably busy when he first opens. Dentist is okay with that. Thanks.
I will close the public hearing and I will move to Commissioner Trachten. Do you have a motion on this?
Thank you, Chair. I recommend continuance of application PL 2024-129, Preliminary Development Plan Duncan Lee Summit, 1399 Northeast Douglas Street, Blument Group LLC applicant to a date certain of September the 12th, 2024.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Could I get a vote, please?
Sherry Frazier?
Yes, I approve.
Donnie Funk?
Yes.
Terry Trachten?
Yes.
Tanya Janet Ford?
Yes.
Randy Benbrook?
Yes.
Thank you. And this application has been continued to a date certain of September 12th, 2024. Move on to our final public hearing and we will open up application PL 2024-151, rezoning from AG to RDR, 3.2 acres along the west side of Northwest Prior Road, located approximately one-third mile south of East Banister Road, 1450 and 1460 Northwest Prior Road, WI Prior Crossing LLC applicant. Anyone wishing to provide testimony or speak on behalf of this application, please stand and be sworn in at this time. The applicant have a presentation for us.
I do not. My name is Kathy County. My address is 202 Northeast Douglas Street, Lee Summit, Missouri. That's my business address. Do you have my home address?
Have to do that?
Okay. I'll defer to Claire's presentation. Just to give you a quick overview, WI Prior Crossings bought this property from Unity Village. They are in the business of building apartments. Since that time, they have stopped in the business of building apartments. Now they just acquire apartments. So they contacted me because the highest and best use for this parcel is residential. At that time, currently, it is three parcels and two of them are landlocked. There was plenty of road frontage. So I suggested to them to change them into three parcels that each had road frontage on prior to create homes with their own driveway access so they wouldn't have to have easements because that's more amenable. Also, the third parcel is in a very deep terrain topographically. It's completely useless residentially. But as part of tract three, which is we're replating, it becomes a really nice nature park area for that owner to go and climb and have recreation activities. So changing the plating, which required the changing of the zoning of one of the plats, made it a much better use for these parts, for these plots.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening. Claire Byers, Senior Planner. I would like to first enter into the record Exhibit A, List of Exhibits 1 through 12.
1 through 12 noted and entered into the record.
Okay, the applicant's request is to rezone the property from agricultural to rural density residential. The purpose of this rezoning is to be able to replat the property and reduce the lot size from 5.54 acres to 3.0 acres. Minimum lot size for ag zoning is 10 acres. Therefore, the applicant is requesting the RDR district, which has a minimum lot size of only one acre. The subject property's existing lot size is considered legally non-conforming since it was platted in 1990, which predates the existing UDO standards. With the approval of this proposed rezoning from ag to RDR, the applicant would meet all of the development standards of that district. The applicant hosted a neighborhood meeting on July 17th, 2024, to discuss the proposal. Two members of the public attended and they are the adjacent property owners. And they were no opposition to the proposal. No comments have been received by staff to date. And at this time, there are no changes to the existing dwellings or exterior site alterations proposed as part of this project. The subject property is generally located on Southwest Prior Road, north of Interstate 470. The northern property line is the city boundary and the parcels directly north are in both Kansas City and Unity Village jurisdictions. The properties immediately surrounding the subject site are zoned ag and R1 with existing single-family residential homes to the south of the site. The Ignite Comprehensive Plan identifies the subject area as mixed use. The proposed RDR zoning is consistent with the existing residential lot on the property and residential lots to the south. While the mixed-use and land-use category is intended to accommodate low-rise buildings with a mix of retail, office, service, and public uses, the vast majority of this area remains classified as mixed use and changing the zoning for this lot to RDR for such a small portion of the area would not interfere with future mixed-use growth. The application follows the Ignite Comprehensive Plan and the requirements of the UDO. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning with the following condition outlined here and in the staff report. And that concludes my presentation. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you. We will look to see. Everybody went home, so I don't think there's anybody here from the public that wants to talk to us. So we will move to the commission for questions. Commissioner Benbrook.
No questions, Chair. Thank you.
Commissioner Janet Ford?
No questions, Chair. Thank you.
Questions, Chair. Thank you.
Frazier.
Questions here. Thank you.
Okay. No questions. We will close the public hearing and we will open up for discussion or a motion from Commissioner Frazier? Any discussion, sorry. Frazier.
I move to recommend approval of application PL 2024-151, rezoning of AG, ag to RDR, 3.2 acres along the west side of Northwest Prior Road, approximately, located approximately one-third mile south of East Banister Road, 1450 and 1460 Northwest Prior Road, WI Prior Crossings LLC applicant.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Could I get a vote, please?
Sherry Frazier?
I approve.
Donnie Funk?
Yes.
Terry Trachten?
Yes.
Tanya Janet Ford?
Yes.
Randy Benbrook?
Yes.
The application has been recommended for approval. On to roundtable. Anything from the commission on roundtable?
Nothing at this time.
No, thanks.
Terry, you're not going to say anything? Staff?
I just have one thing. Go Chiefs.
Yeah. Yes. And with that, we are adjourned.